[inaudible]
You're trying to figure it out?
Yeah. Welcome, everybody. The Eden Prairie Planning Commission, the date is Monday, April 9th. Everyone, please rise for a pledge of allegiance.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. May I be seated? First item of the agenda is actually swearing in a new team member. Mr. Franzen, I take it you'll be covering that?
It's in writing, so I shouldn't make a mistake tonight.
Okay, very good.
I would just like to have Stephen Frank rise and raise his right hand and repeat after me. Hi, Stephen Frank.
Hi, Stephen Frank.
I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of Minnesota.
The state of Minnesota.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties of the planning commission.
The duties of the planning commission.
Of the city of Eden Prairie.
Of the city of Eden Prairie.
And the county of Penopin.
And the county of Penopin.
And the state of Minnesota.
And the state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Then I'll need some signatures and witnesses. One of them can be.
No problem. Commissioner Frank, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
You bet. Next item on the agenda is actual approval of tonight's agenda. Does anyone have any questions? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Moving on to the minutes, for the approval of the minutes for the March 26, 2012 meeting. Does anyone have any corrections or any revisions they'd like to make? Not all entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Wait a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Yeah, I need to abstain as well.
Abstain.
Did you get those, Julie? Okay. Moving on for the public hearings, the first item is Edendale parking expansion and site improvement. The location of the project is 16700 Main Street. Request is for planned unit development concept amendment on 3.25 acres, a planned unit development district review with waivers on 3.25 acres, a zoning district amendment within the RM-2.5 zoning district on 3.25 acres, and a site plan review on 3.25 acres. With that being said, proponent of the project, please come forward and tell us a little about your project. So if you would just, if everyone tonight will stay over on that side, I guess the camera that handles the podium here is broken, so we'll just have everyone go over there. That would be great. And to speak right into that, we also state your names while you're asking for city record.
My name is Wade Johnson, J-O-H-N-S-O-N, and I'm with Outland Builders, and I can give you a little bit of an update on our project from the last time we were here. And I'm going to take out some aids here, if you don't mind. So after we met last time, as you're aware, there was no action taken, and we had another onsite meeting largely because one gentleman who's, or gentleman and his wife whose property happens to border the subject property immediately on the north was out of town. He returned on Thursday of last week, and so we had an impromptu site meeting with he and a few of the other neighbors and discussed a little bit more about our project, some of the things of how they came to be where they're, where it is, and how the evolution of that occurred. During that meeting, we talked about reasons why we were unable to push it further south because of an easement that's held on our property by the adjacent property. We offered in that meeting to install a six-foot cedar fence to help screen headlights from his property, and that's what this sketch shows, is a six-foot cedar fence along the portion that is most close to the Gerald Bouvet property immediately to the north. Also at the meeting, Mr. Bouvet asked if it would be okay with us if he pursued the landowner to the south to discuss the easement, to see if they would be willing to relinquish some of their rights on that easement to allow us to then move our parking further to south, basically to see if he would have better luck with that individual than we did, or that entity than we did. And so last Thursday, Friday, and again this Monday, I've been in conversation with Anderson Property Management, who manages the property owned by Prairie Partners Six, owns the properties immediately east and south. We had some early versions of the plans. Our first analysis was it would be better to have the property, the parking further south away from the residential property. So we showed an early version of the plan encroaching on that easement, and it approached them some time ago. They rejected that, saying that they might, they want to retain use of that easement for themselves further down the road. After a lot of going back and forth, I spoke again to Anderson Property Management, who represents Prairie Partners Six, and she said that she was unable to contact all of the partners that are involved in this, but she did manage to talk to two of them, and one of them in particular said that in no way, shape, or form would they be willing to compromise their easement because it could possibly restrict what they would want to do in the future as far as expansion or enlarging their existing property. So that kind of brings us back to where we're at today. So again, don't feel that that's viable, but I know that the actual neighbors are here today, and they may have a different version. They've also talked with, with the landowner, may have additional information for that as well. So I'm happy to take any questions if anybody has.
We'll hear a staff report and hear some people from the audience, and we'll make it back with you. Okay? Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Mr. Franzen, you want to take us through the staff report, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. If you recall, the staff report we had the last meeting had an attachment where we said if you put these additional trees in, in addition to what's required by ordinance for tree replacement, that that was going to satisfy the screening requirement for the parking spaces. They've come back in with the plan, and rather than doing the additional trees that the staff had suggested, they put in a six-foot-high cedar fence, which also works for screening. So our recommendation for approval would be the six-foot-high cedar fence and the location that's shown on the plan, and the tree replacement that's required by ordinance, which is 68 caliper inches.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
All right. Thank you very much. Commissioners, before we go to anyone in the audience, does anybody have any questions? Okay. Not seeing anybody. Is there anyone out in the audience, sir? Yes, please come forward. If you wouldn't mind, go over to that microphone. Can you tell us your name and spell your last name and give your address, please, for city record?
My name is Gerald Bouvet, and the last name is spelled D as in boy, E-A-U-V like Victor, A-I-S. My address is 7735 Meadow Lane.
Thank you. Mr. Bouvet, can you pull that microphone right in and speak right into it? Just the one, probably either one of those.
That better?
Yeah, that one's fine. Thank you.
I just have two questions regarding this new plan. First is, can the fence be higher than six feet? And the second is, are there going to be less trees because of the fence, or are there going to be the same amount of trees? I'm not sure I understood that.
Okay. Is there anything else, Mr. Bouvet?
No.
Okay. That's okay. You can sit down. We'll have the proponent come for us and ask. Can you answer that question, please?
There would be the same amount of trees as there was in our original proposal in, between their staff had recommended some additional trees, and we're suggesting that there would be a fence in lieu of those additional trees that staff recommended.
So we're okay, Mr. Franzen, as far as the tree, the caliper trees, or anything? Everyone sees?
We're okay with the caliper inches and satisfying the tree replacement requirement. The fence does the screening requirement. The maximum height of fence allowed anywhere in the city is six feet.
Okay. So the answer to that question is no, it has to remain at six feet or below?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Is there anybody else out in the audience that has any other questions or comments? Commissioners, anything you'd like to add? Okay. If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, move to recommend approval of the planned unit development concept amendment
on 3.25 acres, planned unit development district review with waivers on three, two, 3.25 acres, zoning district amendment within the RM-2.5 zoning district on 3.25 acres, and site plan review on 3.25 acres based on plan stamped dated March 2nd and the staff report dated March 23rd of 2012.
Second.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Just a clarification on the motion. Says the report dated March 23rd. Does that need to be updated to the report dated March, or April 6th?
That is correct, Mr. Kirk.
Okay. Would you like to restate that, then?
Sure.
Just changing the date?
Move to recommend approval of the planned unit development concept amendment on 3.25 acres, planned unit development district review with waivers on 3.25 acres, zoning district amendment with, within the RM-2.5 zoning district on 3.25 acres, and site plan review on 3.25 acres based on plan stamped dated March 2nd and the staff report dated April 9th.
April 6th.
April 6th, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Congratulations. You can move forward with your project. Next up is the Meadows at Riley Creek 2012. The location of the project is 9845 Sky Lane. Request is for zoning district change from rural to R1-13.5 on 5.03 acres and a preliminary plat of 5.03 acres into 12 lots and one outlaw. With that being said, proponent of the project, please come forward, state your name again for city record, please, and tell us about your project.
Good evening, members of the planning commission. My name is Steve Bona with JMS Custom Homes.
Steve, how do you spell your last name?
B-O-N-A.
Okay.
Well, we've, we've been working on this property for quite some time, the last few months or more than that, and we've gone through multiple iterations of what it could be. Originally, we started off with something similar to what we're presenting again tonight and following, which was 12 lots, including the existing single-family home, and following that, we, we were attempting to add property to the north of this, and that was the last, that was over the last couple of months. Ran into many complications on the addition of that property, and so we decided to come back with Mr. and Mrs. Remfer's property on its own, and this prop, this project is also 12 lots, including the existing single-family home. So this one's very straightforward. It's, this is a, this is a simple plan. We don't have any waivers that we're requesting. JMS could be one of the builders or could be the builder for this project, although chances are probably, probably high that we may sell the lots to single-family builders other than ourselves. That doesn't mean that we couldn't be building in here as well, but that's kind of the plan at this point. And as soon as, assuming we get approval on the project, we'll move forward with construction and development and home construction as soon as possible. So the market in Eden Prairie is, is strong for single-family homes, and we plan to continue building here and keep our presence going in the city. So we'd like to be here for a long time.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Questions?
We will probably get back with you. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Franzen, you want to take us through the staff report, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is a conforming R113.5 subdivision, conforming the zoning and subdivision regulations, and the staff recommends approval according to recommendations 1 through 7 on page 3 of the staff report.
Okay. Thank you very much. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments about this project so far? Seeing that this is an open hearing, is there anyone out in the audience that has any questions or concerns that would like to come forward and ask? Sir, if you could go directly to that microphone, the camera over there doesn't work, so if you could go over to that microphone, please. State your name and spell your last name and your address for city record. Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
I'm Chris Klein. I live at 9700 Eden Prairie Road. You know, looking at this road here, it, you're designing this to come right through my property, and with, you know, we aren't selling, and with the topography here, I don't know how somebody thinks that this road is going to come down that steep back hill, you know, and with the topography in this whole area, okay, that's number one. Number two is, is this holding pond, you know, I'd have to really look at, you know, how that's going to work and hold back the water from running down drivers and down Smiths and over to my place.
Mr. Klein, would you mind putting, would you mind putting that map down so that, and there's a camera, there's an X over that area over there? Just because I want to make sure that we understand. Can you point out where your property is, sir?
Right here. The road's going to end here, I guess, for now.
Okay.
But, but you, somebody wants to continue this through from here. It's super steep. There's, there's no way to, to have this, it's going to be a 50-foot road.
So your lot is right there next to the Smiths?
Uh, yeah. This is the L here. This is me.
And is that 10 acres? How many acres is that total?
Five.
Five acres. Okay.
And I know that there's platted for, for this part of the road here with three homes on it, and that, that road is all on, on their property. I don't know who's getting that, if that's Toll Brothers now or Pembtown. But there's going to have to be big retaining walls here, you know, and, and number one, we aren't going to do anything right now. We aren't in this process of everybody bailing out. So if, if the city engineer who's ever planning this road, I don't know how you're going to make this work. I'd have to, somebody's going to have to design those plans, and you can't just do this and then just think that there's going to be a road in here. You know, I guess you can, and then you're going to cut down, if I do ever want to sell, you're going to cut down a lot of the houses that could go on there, because I think somebody should examine how steep this is back here.
So can you give us the outline of where your property is? Just so I'm, so crystal clear on it.
This is Eden Prairie Road right here.
Uh huh.
This is this north property line.
And that's your property line right there?
Yep.
Okay.
And coming up here.
Okay.
And then right down to where these three homes start. So this would be the border of the first home.
Got it. So that, the north side of that map, looking at it in that photo, is all in your property line?
Yes.
Got it.
Well, this is my south property.
Correct. Okay.
This, this is too steep for a road. You know, I'm guessing unless, unless everybody in here sells and they can regrade this whole thing, but my concern is that, that if you put a dead end here and a dead end here, this road isn't going to go through for a long time, and if it does, a 50-foot road isn't going to, with retaining walls, and, you know, I don't think I have a, they should do this different, because I don't even know why we need a east-west road here. I just, I just feel like if they go, then I'm cheated with, you know, and then again, maybe I'm not, because I won't be assessed that much, because you can't get that many lots on here.
Right.
So I, I need to get together. This is the first I've seen these plans, but that's a big concern. And then this holding pond, you know, the way, the way the water runs now when the snow melts and, you know, if we get 60 degrees all of a sudden in March, it all comes right through here, and it, it, it drains down here, and I don't know how you could make this flow south in, in, you know, there's no gutters. Is there going to be, there's going to be gutters up here one day, if they could somehow slope it away, so, because, you know, 100-year storm or 50-year storm, or it's going to go right over this pond, I feel like.
Okay.
And slope down here.
We'll see if we can get some answers for you, Mr. Klein. Thank you very much. Did you have anything else?
Not, not right now.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Franzen, you want to address that road that's going through Mr. Klein's property?
I couldn't, I get a better answer from the city engineer, but let me explain what the purpose of this attachment was.
Okay. Thank you.
This attachment was, was kind of an illustrative exercise to look at if you had a road. You have to remind me to talk into the microphone. I think I've learned that after 28 years, but I have a tendency to forget that. The reason we had this exhibit in here was to show that if the road was all north of the Remfer piece, that you could develop the Driver piece and the Smith piece in a conforming manner, consistent with R113.5 zoning, and the Remfer and the Driver and the Smith properties would get relatively the same number of lots. You could probably get another lot on the Driver piece, but you have a desire to keep the existing home. That's why they have 11. This drawing was originally put together by JMS when they were thinking about doing development in the area, and we had them look at making the connection down to Eden Prairie Road, so we could study that. This little stub road that's on the south end is part of the Oak Creek at Henepin Village 6th addition. It's owned by Henepin Village Limited Partnership. They have a preliminary plat approval for the three lots. Originally, when Dan Herbst brought that in, they wanted to do a cul-de-sac. We said for now, we just want it as a stub street, because we didn't want to preclude the opportunity of having a chance to see whether or not making this correction would make sense. I've talked with the property owner before. We're very aware that's a very steep grade, that's challenging. At this point, it's probably unlikely that that would happen, so you could end up with two cul-de-sacs, or the road could go back to the south and go over to Beverly Drive. There is a remote possibility, but this is still going to require some further dialogue with the Metropolitan Airports Commission. They have this temporary road where we have a drainage utility easement for the sanitary sewer in the water. We're going to ask the question whether or not they would consider using that potentially as a public road. How it would get paid for, that would be another thing, but to ask them the question, would you be interested in allowing that to happen? Because if that did happen, that would provide the second way in and out of the Ridgett-Riley Creek neighborhood. It comes in off of, can't remember what the name of that road is, Cirrus Lane or is it Ultra Lane?
Cirrus.
Cirrus Lane, and that would provide a, probably a better connection down to Eden Prairie Road with less grading, but we can't count on that. So that's why we have to look at for now, the potential for the Driver and the Smith piece to basically be two cul-de-sacs. And so I think the question about drainage is probably a better question for Rod to answer, and if he has some other insight on the roads, I'd welcome those comments as well.
Okay. Mr. Reed, can you comment on that, please?
I believe the way the drainage is designed for this 12-acre, or 12-lot subdivision is it all goes to the pond, obviously, and then the overflow for that pond is on Sky Lane. And I know there was some comment in our, our memo to address that a little more closely, but that's, the emergency overflow is onto Sky Lane.
So you don't anticipate any problems at this point?
No.
Okay. Okay. Are there any other comments or concerns out there from the audience tonight? Yes, sir?
We own the Smith property that you see here. My concern is the little corner here, Outlet B. Without that outlot, this area that is the little strip that we own is not wide enough for a 50-foot road. So in order to, on the Outlet B, for there to be a road that provides an east-west access, that has to be public domain. The only alternative to that is to shove the road the other direction, which is currently a home over here. The guy has a pool there. JMS does have an easement to that pool area that technically would allow him to take up the pool or take out part of the pool and put a road through. I don't think the owner of that home would be very happy with that as a solution. So I know he's not here tonight, but I talked to him today, and he is under the impression that under no circumstances that would happen, so I'll put that two cents in there. But I think that the Outlet B here, we don't know when this will be developed, both the Driver and our property. Both those properties are under contract now for potential development, but we all have seen that the economy can change quickly in the housing market, and when it does, sometimes, you know, businesses don't make it. I think it's prudent to make sure that, as the city's requested, that parcel does become part of the public domain, so that should anybody have financial difficulties with their business or something happens, and we're 10 years down the road revisiting the situation, that that land has been set aside. We get one shot to ensure that Outlet B is, can be used for a future road, and we don't have to take property out of a guy's pool. So I think the city's request is fair to make that public domain. As you can see here, Sky Lane is fairly wide here. It broadens. Sky Lane was actually moved when the Ridgett-Riley Creek was developed, so we have a much broader right-of-way area here that easily accommodates putting in an east-west road, should it be necessary. It would be wonderful if MAC would allow us to use the east-west road that's currently a construction road on Cirrus Way. That eliminates this east-west road entirely. It's a much better development plan for these lots, but if we absolutely have to, you know, this is certainly something that is desirable. And just to clarify, that this, this drawing that you see here that's included is your attachment A, that was not something that I participated in, that was provided to me by JMS just as an example of what could be done for development. I did make an offer to have an east-west road, should it be necessary. You'll see here, under the word pond, there's actually a 13th lot on the Remfer property, and the assumption here was that Remfer and Driver would, at all three parcels, would do a combined pond down below. We had asked that if that were to be the case, the road actually shift over as it hit our five acres, so that Remfer would have 12, Driver would have 12, we'd have 12, all properties would have their allotted number. JMS chose, but it would require eliminating Lot 4 on this potential development. JMS decided they weren't interested in that, and hence you see this proposal that came afterwards. So we never came to terms on that. There's no agreement yet on the east-west road, but realistically, should the people that are developing now choose to do that, it's probably going to, it's going to require Outlet B for sure. You can't do an out, east-west road without it as a public domain.
So, Mr. Smith, one question I have for you. So do you, just to be clear, do you own an easement somewhere on that property line that goes all the way across, or do you just own your block?
We own, there's a colored drawing in here. Okay. Shift to this colored drawing. You'll see there's a, a green strip that runs all the way along.
Okay. And you own that whole?
That's 60 and 1/2 feet wide. We own that. We own the five acres that's green. We also have an easement for driveway across the Driver parcel.
So that's how the drivers access their properties, through your easement?
They cross the green area. The drivers have an easement on the little green corner here for their property, and then we have an easement for their driveway to our property. So both parties have an easement on the other property.
Got it.
Sort of a shared driveway arrangement.
Okay. Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Franzen, you want to discuss that outlot with the pond and the right-of-way for that road, and something about, with the pool that was discussed briefly, can you build a pool on an easement? Do you know anything about that?
I think that's a private easement that they have. It's not an easement in favor.
Thank you.
It's nice there's another person here to guide me through how to, how to get through the meeting. It's a private easement that JMS has across that lot, for whatever purposes they want to use. It's not an easement in favor of the city. So if they wanted to put a pool in there, that would be subject to JMS's okay. So if they wanted to put a pool in there, that would be subject to JMS's okay.
And there's already a pool over there. From what was discussed, there's already a pool over there, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
And what we're talking about here is rather than having Outlet B as Outlet B and deed it to us, we want the plat drawing changed to show it as right-of-way. So there's a clear understanding to everybody now and a clear understanding to everybody in the future that we need that chunk of the property so that any future road hits Sky Lane at a 90-degree angle. And that's an engineering requirement.
Right.
And we know with that section, plus some additional property from Smith and Driver, we'll have the 50 feet right-of-way in the right location to make that 90-degree intersection.
So as far as what's going on tonight, that right-of-way is in the works. It is part of the plan.
Yes. We're just recommending they change Outlet B to become additional right-of-way.
Okay. So that solves the problem?
It does.
And Mr. Root, you agree with that? Okay. I feel like I'm talking a lot, Commissioner. Does anybody have any other comments or questions? Is there anybody out in the audience that has any questions? Yes, sir. If you would please come forward to the microphone, state your name, spell your last name for city record.
My name is Chris Piney at 985 Eden Prairie Road. I was wondering, are there improvements planned for Beverly Drive?
Okay. Good question. Mr. Root, can you answer that question? Speak in your microphone, please.
Payback. There's not reconstruction of Beverly Drive anticipated as part of this project. There is a condition as part of the approval in this, in our report or memo to them is that construction access for this subdivision either go through the MAC access road, which was intended to be used for construction access through here. If that does not happen, then the proponent would be required to overlay Beverly Drive down to Eden Prairie Road.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Smith, I think we answered your question too about the right-of-way, so I think we're okay there as well. All right. Yes, sir.
I just have a, one comment about the fact that we're looking at roads in this area again. You know, when we went through the project with Toll Brothers, we also discussed a little bit about closing Eden Prairie Road and the need to make sure we have a comprehensive look at everything that's going to happen road-wise between Dell Road and Eden Prairie Road and that we're not just making limited sort of decisions based on individual pieces of property. And I think this points once again to the need to really make sure we have a comprehensive plan that has the right kind of public input for everything between Eden Prairie Road and Dell Road.
Very good. Travis, did you have a comment that you wanted to make?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Commissioners, any other final comments? Is there anybody out in the audience that has any other final comments or concerns? Okay. If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Chairman, move to recommend approval of the zoning district change from rural to R1-13.5 on 5.03 acres and preliminary plat of 5.03 acres into 12 lots and one outlot based on plan stamp dated March 2nd, 2012 and the staff report dated April 6th, 2012.
Motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. Move forward with the project.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving right along, planners' reports. Mr. Franzen.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We have one public hearing scheduled for our next meeting. It is an existing office building off of Flying Cloud Drive, kind of in the northeast quadrant of the city over near Starkey Labs. It's a building that has a waiver already for 75% office in the industrial zoning district. They have a tenant that needs more parking. They want a waiver to go more than 75% and so they have a request to expand the parking lot. And that's the only item.
Okay.
Should be relatively short meeting for you.
Very good. Any members' reports for tonight? Any continuing business? Any new business? If not, we'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is closed. Thank you very much.